Good morning. Today is Tuesday, November the 12th, 2019, and I call the Potter County Commissioner's Court to order. Today we have Howie Batson, Chief of Staff. These two will do our implications, so if you will please stand for that, we may stand in your place.
Father, we are fortunate to dwell in one of the few places on this planet where people still love each other and work together to seek a common good. Thank you for those who dedicate their time to lead our community. There's so many other things they could be doing. For the criticism they may receive sometime, give them courage. For decisions they must make, give them wisdom. Thank you for your grace and your peace, especially in this upcoming season. In his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, we are going to skip down to number eight so we can free up some space. Regulation of discharge of firearms, discussion only to hear public discussion regarding section 235.022, the local government code, which authorizes county regulation or prohibition of discharge of firearms locked within a subdivision that are 10 acres or smaller and are located in the unincorporated area of Potter County. Who would like to speak to this first?
Sheriff and Scott, give us an update, maybe that was a follow-up from the last meeting before we take someone.
Sheriff and Scott, let's have both of you.
Thank you.
Really don't have much update. We are where we were last meeting. We've not heard from anyone, at least our office hasn't.
Can you give us a summary of what we talked about last court session?
Sure, and I'm not going to get too much into the facts because there are people here from both sides who can better address that than I can. What we have is an existing subdivision, residential subdivision, and after it was developed as a subdivision back in the 50s, I think, a gun range has opened up in that subdivision. State law does not allow the commissioner's court to regulate sport shooting ranges. That much is painfully clear from the local government code's provisions. What is allowed is that the court can regulate the discharge of firearms on tracts of 10 acres or less that is located inside a subdivision and located outside the city limits, in the unincorporated area of the county. The options under section 235.022 of the local government code are that the commissioner's court, in the interest of public safety, may either per pivot or regulate the discharge of firearms on tracts of that subdivision. And that's what's before the court today to consider. Obviously, we have not, the agenda item does not allow for action today. It's for discussion, for consideration. I think the state attorney court needs to seriously consider. There are obviously not only legal interests at play under the local government code, in the larger picture, there are some, at least, some suggested first, second amendment issues at work or at play here. And the other side of the coin, which came out during the last meeting, is the unintended reach of any particular prohibition or regulation, whether people who live out in subdivisions on smaller tracts would be prohibited from shooting at targets or shooting at varmints or like similar types of activities because, again, sport shooting ranges aren't being regulated here. The question before the court is whether to regulate shooting at all on smaller tracts of land. And so that would apply across the board in the unincorporated areas of the county, at least insofar as subdivisions are concerned. So Bushland, Rolling Hills, places like that. So that's basically where we are right now. Anything you want to add, Sheriff?
Just the same fact that this was brought to you for a safety issue only, it's not done anything to a second amendment. This is a safety issue that we've seen over the last year that seems to be escalating with bullets. Can I prove they're coming from the range? No. Can I prove that they're not coming from the range? No. But it is an issue for the safety issue. Now, the other part of that is with that law and noise complaints as well. That's another issue. That's the reason why we brought it to, I brought it to the county attorneys and I brought it to.
You mentioned the noise complaint. Do we have any recommendation from the county attorney about that?
Well, again, your ability to regulate in that area is fairly tightly circumscribed. The basic options open to the court right now are to prohibit or regulate shooting, discharge of firearms on tracts, as we've mentioned, or to simply vigorously enforce existing state law, specifically sections 42.01 of the penal code, the disorderly conduct statute, which among other things prohibits making unreasonable noise in or near a residence which the defendant has no right to occupy. And there's a, of course, if rounds are escaping the range, there is a provision in Parks and Wildlife Code that creates a class C misdemeanor for firing a projectile over a property line.
So Scott and Sheriff, a couple of things here, just help me confirm kind of our baseline knowledge, and I'm referencing a couple of comments even from last commissioner's court. So today, we're not slated for any formal action. It's really just to continue our discussion. And so the commissioner's court, we can't and we are not slated to regulate a gun range, but we are having discussion around the discharge of particularly smaller tracts of land. So if we did take action, which we're not slated to do today, but if we did, we really have kind of two lanes that we can move towards. We can move towards completely regulating it. That could be something from the hours, right? Hours from eight to five, right, type of thing? Or removing it, and that's the, kind of the opposite end of the spectrum, right? So those are kind of two options if we did that. Or we could do nothing, right? Which is what is in existence today. Okay. And then Sheriff, from your perspective, from a public safety, what you shared with us during the last commissioner's court is there was a stray bullet that I think hit a car while someone was cleaning their car. And so there are various scenarios that are being reported around this particular range, and we're afraid that someone's going to get hurt, kind of at the end of the day, right? Okay.
Okay, is the owner of the, would you like to speak first?
If I may speak briefly first.
Need you to come to the podium, the statement, name and your address.
Sure. Scott, how are you? My name is Diana Hathaway, and I am a former prosecutor. I am a defense attorney here in town, and I represent a couple of different organizations. One of the organizations is called U.S. Law Shield. And what they do is they help and they defend people who hold a license to carry what used to be a concealed handgun license. These by and large are law-abiding citizens. You obviously need a license to carry. You cannot have any prior criminal history. You can't have any more than a ticket, no violent offenses, no pen offenses. These are law-abiding citizens. So if they shoot somebody on their property in self-defense, I would come in and help them if they were registered through this, basically, insurance company. Another organization that I actually represent and help is CLEEP, Combined Law Enforcement, right? So the officers that get into shootings, things like that, you know, I will sometimes go out to the scene and help them prepare defense in addition to defending people who are charged with criminal offenses. So I kind of have a wide range from my prosecutorial background to what I do now, still working with law enforcement, working with Law Shield, people who are following the law. Jay Smith, who is the owner of the gun range in question, is, was actually the teacher, right, that Law Shield put out to help me go through the classes to get my LTC. And what I want to bring up is a couple of things. First and foremost, I want to say that it is my opinion, and I'm certainly not the brightest crayon in the box, I, you know, could definitely be wrong about this, but it's my personal opinion that we in this area, we're not all about big government and regulations. And the people who move out to the county, the people who live outside of the city limits, they choose to live where they live for a reason. We all choose where we want to live, okay? And there's a reason for that. Whether as Scott brought up, it is shooting varmints or being able to shoot at targets, I want to have control over my own land. There's a reason that we have the regulations that we have in place. And the government code has already set those regulations in place. And it has restricted a commissioner's court from putting in these regulations for a reason. We don't need more regulations from the government. We don't. And people who live in the county and want to be able to have freedom to shoot, to access their land and to use their land as they see fit, do not need more regulations in place. That's my personal opinion. Now, that being said, when we're looking at regulating a gun range, you can't just take one gun range and say, "We're going to regulate you." You have to apply it equally to all. If we're not regulating sporting gun ranges, then why isn't it that we're picking on the little guy who doesn't have the money to defend himself like the sporting ranges do? We shouldn't be doing that. We shouldn't be picking and choosing people that we'd want to set restrictions on. This could affect a person's job, economy, their entire life by putting these regulations into play. As far as the noise goes, Jay has a presentation on this. The noise complaints that have been put out, he will address that. He will also address all of the things that have gone into safety and all of the regulations that are already required at a gun range, okay? So these are issues that, in my opinion, and I did watch the news article that was put out, and I felt like it was very misleading. Unfortunately, we were not given any notice, which we're not required to give any notice, that nobody's required to tell us that this is coming up. But neither Jay nor myself, as a representative for Law Shield, was given any notice that this was going to be presented last commissioner's court. Or we could have been here to debunk a lot of the misinformation that was put out. But this isn't just a safety issue. This is an issue about what people can do who have gone and gotten their licenses, who are trying to practice, who are trying to use their right to bear arms. This does go to your second amendment rights, but it goes further than that.
If I may, I'm sorry. Let me make sure, just because we do have time restrictions, and I want to make sure that we get to all public comment, and I know Judge will highlight.
I have one more comment, and then I was going to pass it over to Jay.
Okay, so I'll let the judge direct us on how she would like to handle.
I forgot to tell you, you have a three-minute limit, which you've probably already gone over, but that's okay.
They went over the three minutes, too.
That's okay.
They're not considered public comment.
They live here.
Right.
Me, too. You have one more minute to finish your deal, then we'll talk some more.
The last thing that I was going to say is that this is more far-reaching than just gun rights. It also goes into land rights. There are landowners that have designated their plots of land to be able to use them as gun ranges, and I will remind you that you are also going to be putting regulations on how people are allowed to use their land. And with that, I was going to pass it over to Jay.
Two quick clarification points, if I may.
Yes, please.
So you're representing Mr. Smith, is what I'm hearing in your context.
I am here as an advisor to Mr. Smith.
An advisor, okay.
I do work for Law Shield, however.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then you're advocating for no more regulations, is what I heard in your comments. And then just as a clarification point, we do not have purview to regulate gun ranges. So I just want to clarify that.
I understand.
And I'll look towards our legal counsel for a nod. So I've heard you mention that a couple of times in your context. That's not in our lane, so I just want to make sure we're very clear, that is not what we're here to do.
Right.
So I just, I want to speak to that.
But in effect, it would be regulating a gun range.
Yeah, I think that's interpretation. Commissioner, I'm sorry.
No, that's what I think is covered in how we hear the other presentations. That's why I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I agree with most of everything you said. But does the right of the discharge of the gun owners have abridged the safety of the citizenry that are in that area's layout?
Well, first and foremost, I don't think it is, and I think you'll hear that in Jay's presentation. But secondly, I think we have a legal avenue for that, and that is a civil suit. I mean, there's a reason that there's no criminal action been brought in this.
Before or after?
Either or. I mean, there is a public nuisance suit that could be brought before, and that would be a complete different arena. And there is also a civil suit where there are damages at play. So I think that that would be the avenue for those people.
Yeah, and I think, Commissioner, from our comments last time, we had from public, and thank you very much, Ms. Ray. From our comments, we had last time, they talked about the suit and how cost prohibitive it would be for an individual, because they had looked at some initial suits, and it was really hard for an individual or even a group of individuals to get dollars together to start to look at a suit. So, you know, we have to weigh, obviously, both sides of the debate. So I just, just so everybody has context.
I just have one question.
And we weren't privy to that.
Sure, and it's all public comment.
Yeah.
Have you heard about the incident where the car was shot at?
I have not. I was not in the last hearing.
There was an incident where a car was shot at, a vehicle shot at, and the person was watching that car at the time. So my question would be, if that person was hitting the pillar by a bullet, would you represent the gun range at that time?
If they had a concealed carry license and they were using it lawfully, I would.
Do you know if, whether or not the gun range is, ownership is watching everything that's going on during the time it's open or not?
They actually do. They have cameras that fall over, and that will be in the presentation. And Sergeant, I will tell you that the reason that no case was filed on that is just as the sheriff said, they can't prove that it comes from that range. And the reason is because in the county, people like to use their land and use their guns as they see fit. And if we're going to regulate them, Mr. Smith, we're regulating them, too. Right? And he does, I believe it's on your computers, and I don't know if it's shorter than three minutes, but it is very useful.
Mr. Smith, please state your name and your address.
Jay Smith, 19200 Saginaw Canyon, Texas. We also have the gun range at Foy Echo in Amarillo.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to be here. There were some things in the last meeting that were not accurate, and I feel like I need to address to make sure that the full story's out. First off, the noise complaint. Government code says that I cannot be prosecuted or anything else for noise because we are within the confines of the law, either through the court system or civil. Government code says that. With the public in mind, we know that we have the right to shoot 24 hours a day out there, but we obviously don't do that. We shoot from sunup to sundown, with one exception, the well-armed women who we work with, the local chapter, it's a national shooting club for women. They shoot in the evening, only in the dark during daylight savings, and the range is lit for them. There's no gunfire after dark, other than that one damn month, there is never any gunfire on the range after 10 o'clock. Usually it's dark before then, even during the summertime. But we did do a noise survey when this came to our attention a few years ago. As you can see in the presentation, the decibel level of the 30 caliber bullet fired on the rifle range, standing at Amarillo Street in the bar ditch, is 81 decibels. A car driving down Amarillo Street, the speed limit is 85 decibels. In our conversation here, I'm probably right around 78 decibels. So that gunshot, that time it gets across Amarillo Street, is not as loud as a car driving down the street. You'll also notice on Amarillo Street, a 69-decibel reading, a 61-decibel reading, and a car driving down that street is over 70 decibels as well. So the noise coming off that property is actually less than a car driving down the street in front of your home at the speed limit. This is the government code that regulates the noise, that tells you that a sporting range cannot be prosecuted civilly or through the courts criminally for noise. This slide shows where folks that I know for a fact are shooting in the county, all right? Sergeant Kelly brought up the instance where a car was struck with a bullet. Deputies came out to our range as soon as that happened, and there was no one shooting on the range. 80% of the time when deputies come out, no one is shooting on the range. 20% of the time, there are. So that in itself tells me that there are people shooting in the county, there are bullets flying wherever, but they are 80% of the time, I know for a fact, they're not coming from us. The other 20% of the time, every time something gets reported, whether it's through Potter County or a resident, we investigate. We investigate through, you know, looking at the evidence, we will look at our cameras. I can tell you who's there, what time they came there, where they're shooting, what bench they're shooting. I can see them pull the trigger on their firearm, and I can take that same timestamp, zoom in on the target, and tell you where the bullet's hitting on the burn. We've spent a lot of time and money to be able to ensure that we are over and above the requirement for safety for a shooting range. This is how the range is constructed, all right? NRA requires for a 750,000 populated county, which where Potter County is, what, about 120?
125.
In order for me to meet the regulations for a 750,000-person populated county, I have to meet NRA requirements, which I do not have to meet now, however. The range is bermed on three sides, which is over and above the requirements for the NRA. The range is eight feet deep. We're not shooting into a berm, we're shooting into solid earth. Combined with the earth and the amount of dirt in the berm, that berm is 32 feet tall. It's over 50 feet thick at the base, and what we're actually shooting in, like I said, is solid earth. You can see the holes behind the targets. Because that is angled downward, you're never shooting on a level plane, you're always shooting downward. In order to clear the berm, you would have to elevate your gun 23 degrees, which is going to increase the range. You see the Texas Department of Parks and Wildlife, they have populated the distance for bullet per caliber. You'll notice that the shortest range bullet on there is a 22 short, which very few people shoot, but that range is over a mile. You can also see in the photograph that from the range to the building that had the garage door hit, that is less than half a mile. At 23 degrees, that bullet would still be traveling upward as it cleared that house if someone intentionally shot over the top of that berm. Now, the law says that I have to make sure that we have done things to reasonably contain a bullet within the tract. And we are over and above what the requirements are for a county three or four or five times the size of Potter County. I mentioned the camera systems that are installed. There are seven cameras on the range. No one gets on, no one gets off that we can't see, including night vision. As you can see, the gentleman there is on the first lane, that's a 100-yard range where he's shooting. I can zoom that camera in and tell you how many diamonds are on his wedding ring. That's the length of the range. As you can see, the 25 to 50 yard ranges, we've constructed railroad tied boxes behind it because when you're shooting at a downward angle, when the bullet passes through the target, the bullet could skip off the bottom of the range and impact the berm behind. That's not what we want. We don't want that bullet to hit the berm, so we contain the bullet in the box. But you can also see the holes behind the three 100-yard range targets. The bullet that supposedly hit a fence, we did the investigation, that bullet impacted inside that hole. In order for a bullet to have hit that fence on Panhandle Street, which is north of that hole, that bullet would have to go in, out, up, and change direction. When we looked at the fence, when a bullet strikes something, it's going to cave inward. All of that wood was splintered outward, which looked to me like someone at some point in time had either poked something or dug something out of that fence. The bullet that was shown on the garage door, that happened a couple of years ago. That individual called me, and his first question was, "Do you guys shoot pistols north or south?" We shoot from north to south. And his next statement was, "Okay, that bullet didn't come from your range because it was a pistol." I bent out, I looked at it, pistols are not fired to the north. That didn't come from us. You can also see here how those targets are constructed on the short end. That's full of sand and the railroad tie retainers, which again is over and above what the NRA requires. I've got over 20 years of military service, I'm a retired veteran. I also have law enforcement experience in New Orleans. While I'm not a ballistic expert by any means, I've got some experience. Those bullets are not coming from our range. We are a target because if you hear a gunshot, the first thought is, "It's the gun range." I want to do things by the law, by the book. We research the law before we put it in. We made rounds down Echo Street, Central, and Amarillo Street. We talked to every resident that was home. We tried three different times. We left business cards and flyers letting them know we were building a range. We didn't have to do that. I have the utmost courtesy in mind for the community. We have made Potter County a safer place because there's a lot of people that shoot at our range that used to shoot on their own property. I am not sure that if you regulate the discharge of firearms, if that applies to a sport shooting range because the government code says a sport shooting range is allowed. I don't want to get into that. I want to find some kind of reasonable solution, but I also want to make sure that we all understand, just because it's a shooting range doesn't mean those bullets are coming from us. I take every allegation extremely serious, and I investigate it as far as I can possibly go.
In your opinion, Mr. Smith, where would those bullets be coming from if they're not from your range? Just out of curiosity.
Well, I know as shown on this slide, those red dots represent places where I know people shoot because I've witnessed it. I've been out there a lot of times doing bookwork, and I hear gunshots from Howl Sand, north of the Lou, all over. And I've been asked by deputies, when I hear that, give them a call, let them know they're shooting in the county. I've done that. But it's hard to investigate a gunshot when you don't know where it's coming from. And the reasonable assumption is, it's the range. Now, every deputy that's come out there, they look at the range, they walk around, they take measurements, they take photographs, and every single one of them tell me, "I don't think the bullet's coming from your range."
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service, Attorney.
Yeah, thank you very much. I want to hear from someone who lives out there. Okay, you.
I'm Jesse Dorian, I'm living in Tannehill Springs. Terrified. This is coming from a human aspect, not from legal standpoint or studies or whatever. This is coming from a neighbor that's there, that a 15 This is coming from a neighbor that's there, that a fifteen-year-old daughter had a cough. My fifteen-year-old daughter, my seven-year-old kid scraped his knee because of the noise so loud. We can't sleep sometimes. It's ridiculous, getting ridiculous. Did we have these meetings two years ago before they moved in? No. I guarantee you, we didn't have them because we didn't have this nuisance, we didn't have this problem. We live there, we... I'm working across the street, I hear these bullets fly over my... I had to work one day to provide for my kids. I had to work sideways because I was afraid it was going to hit my chest because those things fly over. We called the sheriffs, they've been great. I tell you, they've been great. One day they were out there and they heard them. They heard them, they heard them bullets. I guarantee you, if you were there, you would be yelling and screaming too. I'm scared for my kids, they can't even go outside to play because of the noise and because of the bullets. There's no reason why they can't move out somewhere else. We're yards away from there. It's not... They say they're only shooting south or north, they're shooting both ways. There's a neighbor over there that's had to park now his trucks, his trailer trucks, three of them, to keep because of the danger.
Jesse, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name, sir.
Vador.
Vadori?
Yes.
Mr. Vadori, do you feel like it's coming from the gun range?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We didn't have this before the gun range was there.
So Mr. Vador, are you saying that you believe that the actual bullets are coming from that?
I know they're coming from...
Or are you more concerned with the noise?
No, I know they're coming from that. Because we not only live there, we all work together there. The Yarborough's across the street, the Voskis is over there, I mean, his house is shot up, we're building a house for him right now. It got hit Saturday, they couldn't find the bullet, just like that gentleman said, and that's true. You can't find the bullet, but we report them. And this goes on all day long. We had a peaceful neighborhood before that came in, peaceful. Where you could go out and cook, you could go out and talk, you could invite your neighbors. Our neighbors, I'm a pastor...
Let me ask you a question. You say that they, one particular house had a lot of bullets that were actually lodged in the facility?
Yes.
And they could not find the bullets?
No, they found the bullets, both of them, both bullets. Because one of them hit the trailer...
Who found them?
The sheriffs did.
Sheriff, can you testify to that, that you actually found the bullets and did an investigation of maybe where they originated from?
One lodged into a TV in the house, one on lodged inside the garage where they were talking about.
Let me ask the sheriff just a second there. In that particular...
We do have some bullets that we have recovered, but again, I can't prove where they're coming. Mr. Smith is correct, I can't prove that.
Thank you, sir.
We know where they're coming from.
Thank you, okay, thank you for being here, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Gary Hug at 7200 Cat Creek, and me and my wife...
Where's your left hand? Where's your left hand?
Hug at the boat. And me and my wife own land straight north of the Lou, five acres, nineteen acres, and straight north of Willa Creek. Like Mr. Smith says, so if the bullets aren't hitting twenty feet to the side of the berm, they're hitting a mile away. So that's now my house off Willa Creek. Colton, which I'll probably speak in minutes, shop has been hit several times. He's directly in line with the rifle range. If you look at the map, you're dead parallel. I don't have a gun license to carry, but I own guns. My background is an engineer. If you take the angle, you can hit his building. Okay, no matter what they come up and say. I'm not asking you to regulate against the gun shooting, but if it takes ten acres or less and say we don't shoot, I won't shoot on my five acres, I won't shoot on the two acres. My property is in the city of Willa Creek, fifty feet's outside of the city. I don't go out there and shoot turkeys because I know the city's going to come instantly several. I filed a complaint April fourteenth when they were going over his building because he wasn't there with the sheriff, with the city, and called the game warden. Okay? Grandson, they found a bullet, we don't know where the bullet come. He says nobody was shooting. We videoed the people coming out, the gate, his gate. We drove them around rally, do signal shooting. Bullet had to be going over the berm, there's no doubt. From an engineer's standpoint, it's going over the berm. Somebody's either doing that on purpose, accidentally, or whatever reason, it doesn't matter. So they're telling the truth. This never happened, we've been there since 2000. I lived off Applewood since sixty-three when I was a kid with the river. People don't shoot like they're saying. I don't go shoot my gun. We were hunting dove north of the Lou fifteen years ago. Game warden showed up and said a person complained, we stopped him because guns can't go that far. Why can't they put a roof over the range? That's not even possible, simple. You can put a pole barn, but I guarantee you, they're going to have bullets go through the roof.
So Mr. Hug, in your opinion, the bullets are coming from the range?
Yes.
In your opinion?
Yes.
And they're hitting these buildings and they're stray bullets running around?
Yes.
Sheriff, the type of caliber that you found in those infrastructures or whether the vehicle or whatever, is it consistent with what the calibers are that are used on the gun range?
There's no calibers, I don't know what the one was the sheriff has found.
The ones we've found have been unknown.
But that wasn't the ones now, well, he instead, he now makes it dangerous for me out off Willa Creek by the Potter County Fire Department, by bow hunters, that now a bullet can go two miles to there.
Working along with APB, is there an increase of drive-by shootings that we've seen here over the course of the last year?
No, no. Everybody knows they've been in that area, so we do, if somebody, we'd call police. He said he's filed reports. I asked the sheriff this past week how many reports he had filed, Mr. Smith. I don't know if he found out any or any.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hug, thank you.
I do have one other thing. What, if you do not do something here, there's nothing that's going to keep me from buying property north of the Tuscaloosa Country Club, putting the same thing in. So you are regulating the whole county, you're stopping other people from doing the same thing to other people.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I need to know now if there's anybody who lives out there who does not have a complaint.
My name's Raymond Duran, I'm at fourteen fourteen Knight, which is directly south of the range, I'm by Howl Sand, and I would be within that mile trajectory that folks have been brought up. I've been out there for eleven years and I heard gunfire all the time before the range was ever put in. I still hear gunfire from the range as well, but I know what's going on and I know the times of day and I, you know, I feel safer that it's at the range. I went to a community meeting two years ago about this and brought up the issue that, you know, it was safer for people to shoot at the ranges and in their own backyards at camps. And one of the community members said they'd rather have all their neighbors in their backyard shooting at camps. That's not safe, the range is safe. As far as the wildlife rule about shooting across property lines and across roads, the Potter County range is directed to where law enforcement is shooting directly towards Highway sixty. If they shoot and clear the berms at that range, they're shooting right over the highway, right at the highway. I shot out there for thirteen years with the state, I know how the range is set up. So if you want to look at it as a safety issue, you're going to have to address your own range.
Is there concern with the noise from the interstate?
I, well, like I said, I'm out a little bit further away, it's very faint where I am. I can sometimes tell when they're having a clash just because of the repetition, I really don't hear when there's an individual shooter out there. I'm also a chief range safety officer certified and, you know, from a safety standpoint, when the range is used as intended, it's a safe range.
So Mr. Duran, all these extra bullets and noise that the other residents are speaking to, in your opinion, that's not from the range, is that correct?
Since the range has opened, I have called at least three times whenever I've seen people on Wilson Street shooting out of their vehicles into the empty field across from my property. They, you know, officers have responded, people, you know, pull out, you know, they shoot five to ten rounds and then they just jump in their cars and run off. To me, that's more dangerous than having a range that's set up to contain the bullets. I have, there have been multiple times that I've heard gunshots, you know, late at night, when I know the range is closed, you know, I've heard it before the range ever even opened, before the range existed. So there are several other places that bullets can become.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, sir.
You live about five miles from there. Where's your five yard range?
Thank you. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Wait, wait, what are you going to...
I'm the one who, my building is the one that's been catching bullets through it. And I would just like to speak on that.
Okay, this is the last speaker.
Yes, ma'am.
You've got three minutes.
Yeah, no problem. Colton Campbell, seventy-two, or sorry, two-three-two-nine East Loop, three-three-five. I don't have an issue with people shooting guns. I'm making so carry on myself, all about everybody arming themselves. This isn't an issue about that. My children play out there. When I'm having multiple projectiles either hit the shop, go through the door of the shop, my kids are finding them, I've turned many into the sheriff. That's unacceptable. Mr. Smith stated he lives in Canyon. I don't think he would be all that enthused if I opened the gun range right down the street from his house and shot from sunup to sundown. Let's look at property values, what that's going to do to our homes. How am I going to sell my house that I've worked for years on, trying to build it up, put equity in it? Am I going to have to call him up, "Hey, do you think you could stop shooting so I could show my house so that somebody may buy it and not duck and run?" Many times I have multiple friends that'll attest to you here, semi-automatic fire, boom, 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 boom. Woo! What I think's happening, you know, is walking up the berm and over the berm. I'm not saying that he's built an unsafe facility, but there's no, there's nobody there all the time. Is there a range master there watching you shoot every day? No, there's not. So I would just like to...
Those projectiles that indicate that are hitting your infrastructure, is it consistent with the time that the gun range is being utilized and fired?
I believe it is. He stated that I, that I had told him that, "Oh, there's no possible way that that can be you." That's not the case. We don't know where that's coming from or, I mean, maybe it's not, but like I said, work with us, let's find out where this is coming from, let's put a stop to it. He's right, I didn't want to go talk to him because in my state at that point, it would have escalated into a conflict, so I sent the sheriffs over there to do their job. I would just like you guys to really consider that, this is a neighborhood, why do we need a gun range in the middle of a neighborhood?
Mr. Campbell, in your opinion, is these stray bullets from the gun range, is that your opinion?
I believe, I believe it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
One question for Mr. Smith. How do the people gain access to your facility?
The gun range is gated, you have to be a member. We issue members RFID cards, which documents their time in and time out, so we know who's there and who's not. On the days that the office is open, the gate is open. So if people want to shoot, they actually have to come in, sign a log, put their member number down on the log.
So my question, is there a range master there all the time?
So a range master's there Monday, Wednesday, Friday...
During the time all this firing's going on?
There's not a range master there all the time. When the gates are open, there is a range master, otherwise it is closed to members only who are carefully screened before they get in.
So the gun range master is there when there's shooting going on at the range?
Only when the range gates are open.
In other words, when they're closed, anybody that's a member can come in?
They can come in on their own.
Right, members can come in on their own because they have a key card. There is not a range member or a range master there when the gates are closed and shooting is only, it's restricted to members only.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you. Okay.
Can I ask a couple of questions? This may affect how we advise the court for Mr. Smith.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Smith? I'll turn to you.
You mentioned business cards on you.
Yes.
Is this a business that you run?
It is.
And, thank you. Regarding access, the gates are locked. Is law enforcement welcome to come onto the property as needed?
Yeah, they've always been welcome and invited.
And that will be the case going forward?
I believe so. I see no reason why we shouldn't. We have nothing to add.
That's all I need.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, everybody, for coming. There's not going to be a vote today, we'll just discussion only, so we appreciate all of you attending and we will take this under advisement from our attorneys and see what we need to do. Okay? Thank you. Okay, number one on the agenda is recognition of minutes, recognize the minutes from the October twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, Potter County Commissioners Court. No changes, no changes. Recognized.
We want to hear now.
Are we two... Well, I was... Turn on down.
As I'm... Keep a monitor.
I feel like I should go more time.
Sure have a lot of your quest, man. Welcome to the club.
Okay, okay. Number two vouchers to consider and act upon the approval of the certain vouchers processed by the county attorney's office in the period of October twenty-third to November sixth, twenty nineteen. Check numbers, one eight eight one six one four one eight eight three eight one, wire transfers thirteen oh nine through thirteen twelve, amount of four million, two hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred forty-four dollars, ninety-nine cents.
Move we approve the vouchers as presented.
Second? No questions.
I have a motion and a second on favorable hand. Insurance report, is Kay here today?
I will give a quick update, Judge, if I may, on the insurance plan change, only because I feel like I'm the case study. One of the things that I did report with our new plan change, I mentioned an ER issue that we had, and so I've been working with our plan advisor because we really did have a limited choice of ER. I also encountered a very unique scenario where a patient could have been accidentally referred to a radiology center that is not in our plan, which meant a patient could have got a four thousand dollar bill and would have not known the difference. I just happen to know the difference and know to question it. So of course I'm asking questions along the way, I just know the questions to ask with my healthcare background. So as these things are happening, I'm of course working with Kay and working with the plan advisor, and so I jokingly say, "I guess I'm the case study of all these things that are happening through the transition." But what I often say is, "I will report this back to the court," right? So I think that is kind of our purview, but I just, it's important that we have a good plan for our employees.
So yes, my question is, how...
So, yes, my question is, how, how, how could, uh, in the scheme of things?
Yes.
Would a patient who recommends to be advised to go to, uh, a specialism without knowing that they're in the plan?
Yeah, so the example that I'll give you, because I was the patient, so I'll just give you my scenario as a quick story. So I had to get an outpatient test, and it was at the hospital. Northwest is our per, preferred provider now. And so it was an outpatient radiology test, and, and so they say, okay, Mercy, the patient, go to an ER clinic to go get the CT scan that you need to get done. And it's under the Northwest umbrella, but go here. So their outpatient scheduling area says, go here, they can get you in sooner. You don't have to wait as long. I, of course, know to question that because it's a standalone ER, and I know how the billing works, so I say, no, I don't think that's right. So I call Kay and say, Kay, this doesn't seem right to me. Long story short, that indeed is not right. And if I did not know to question that, I, if I was the mother, you know, of a patient, or I was the patient, I would've thought I did the right thing. I called my hospital, they sent me here, I end up with this big bill. So I'm working with the plan provider to say, if I was the patient, I would've thought I did the right thing. I called the hospital, and they said, go here. So with those kind of things that are gotchas, um, so, long story short, those type of things affect people because you end up with a bill. A CAT scan, as an example, is a three thousand, four thousand dollar procedure. So, um, my point to all that and kind of bringing that to the Commissioners Court is, um, I often say, I'll keep the court apprised of all of this transition because these are the things that affect our employees on the day-to-day. This is past the plan transition, and when you're actually starting to use your medical benefits. So, um, I'll keep you guys posted. Yeah. Because they say it's up to the patient to know their plan design.
Well, that would be the question that would be posed to, to, uh, to Kay.
I'm just telling you. That works in healthcare. Yeah, and I'm working with Kay very closely.
Kay knows.
Kay knows, and I'm working with Kay, but I, I just, I'd like to keep you informed of that because we often get various questions from our departments, and I know we have department heads in the audience. So I think it's important for us to know these type of things are happening in the transition.
Okay.
Anyway, all right.
We are going to move to number nine for Randall to get rid of him. Have two to consider enacted upon the approval of the Texas Department of Public Safety interlocal agreement with the Panhandle Auto Theft and Burglary Unit. Insurance coverage for a vehicle that national insurance has loaned to the Panhandle Auto Theft and Burglary Unit and State Farm grant of eighty-six hundred dollars to the Panhandle Auto Theft and Burglary Unit to be used for advertising. Morning.
Basically just to renew? Is this basically just to redo?
Yes. It's the last, last one. They're always the last. I have to poke them thirty-four times to kind of get to it. So for the interlocal agreement, we're, um, it's the last one, it's the renewal. We've had Randall County ours, all of it's done. We've got all the district attorneys signed up again for allowing us to even do our stations and working on the law enforcement code.
Does the city also get this, or is it just the county municipalities? Do they also get this grant?
Do you have the city in the role? We give that in the first place.
Okay. And then one of the things that I asked for is, it would be nice to have some stats, um, the progression of what this is looking at.
We're, we're working on that, yes.
Okay.
So, and then the next one for the insurance on the vehicle that's being loaned to the PEG two. We've got a contract.
Yes, we've got a copy of that.
The one that you have doesn't have the numbers.
Oh, okay.
We want you to sign the one that has the numbers.
I got you. Could you share the numbers?
Then I will type that back. No, we're not getting those numbers up.
Okay.
We don't want to have anybody be able to track it.
Oh, you mean the vehicle numbers, the VIN numbers?
The vehicle number, right.
Thought you meant the expense numbers.
No, not the expense.
Oh, no, no, no. Expenses, three, four, we could use, somewhere around three hundred and forty dollars.
I don't need your VIN number anymore.
And then, uh, we've got a letter, um, for State Farm, who donated eight, eight thousand, six hundred dollars for advertising for a crime prevention effort. And, um, we're gonna try to write and ask that too.
Okay, cool. We're gonna do billboards?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Lock your car.
Lock your car.
Take your keys.
Take your keys.
Got you. I've seen them. Okay, okay. Um, so, we, can we do all this in one fell swoop, or you wanna do one example?
Um, I just have one quick question, Judge, on the insurance. This, we've done the insurance before. Okay, all right. I make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement with the Panhandle Auto Theft and Burglary Unit and the Texas Department of Public Safety to approve the insurance coverage for the national insurance, uh, for the vehicle, or the na, national insurance, to be loaned to the Panhandle Auto Theft and Burglary Unit and to recognize the State Farm grant of eight thousand, six hundred.
I'm sorry.
I have a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand. Uh, zero. You're gonna do the, we're seeing also veterans, mental health grant while you're there?
Yes, ma'am. We have a resolution in regards to our veterans program, um, about the, uh, funds that we're receiving through the Texas Veterans Commission grant that we've gotten. This is for the next grant that will be coming up. And so we did a resolution about that last time, and I'd like to acknowledge that, um, the funds. The grant this time is gonna be thirty thousand dollars. It's gonna be... We're not paying for any interns, so we less involved with basketball last time. We're gonna get away from being involved with the interns and the council director. Because if Denise is the head of it, so if she gets, or the council gets told something, it's, she's working directly for us, then what winds up happening is we've got that conflict going on.
Can I do a, a quick summarization of what this act, uh, relates, what I expect to, uh?
This is the veterans grant, where we are doing the mental health along with, and we've got a civilian on the side with the money's for the, the veterans program. And so it's, it's a mental health deal. Uh, we've gotten an executive director kind of over that, that's Denise Heathley. She's got all the credentials to handle and work with interns appropriately. So she's gonna be in charge of all of them. We had gotten money in the past for, to pay some of them for that out of this grant. And because of the conflicts, we didn't do that this time. And so there's thirty thousand dollars, uh, in the grant. There's, I think it's nineteen for, it's nineteen for travel, and it's gonna be eleven thousand for the social services like, uh, U-ber, getting U-ber's, that kind of thing, so they get to, they can get to the, the place if they don't have the ability to. And I wanna...
I don't, but I know they're doing a good job.
And so one thing about the, uh, one thing about the nineteen thousand, there is a, a conference that is gonna go on in California that we would like for a commissioner, or to a judge, or to, and I know they're wanting me to go out there also, to go see the veterans program, how it all works, you know, all that sort of thing, and go to that conference. And I think that's February or March of next year.
In California.
San Francisco.
It'd be warmer there.
So Randall, this...
They're paying for it.
So Randall, this program is a jail diversion program, so for veterans with mental health issues, they get counseling and therapy as opposed to jail time, right? Okay.
They go into a one-year plan.
Okay.
And if they successfully complete the program.
Okay.
Then the case is true.
So we've been doing this a couple of years now, is that right? Three years. Do we have any idea how many graduates have gone through this? Like, is it successful?
I would say it's been very successful. I'd say it's successful, let me say it one.
Right.
But anyway, but, uh, we have had very, very, very few veterans drop out of the program.
Okay, and how many normally go into the program?
Well, we started small.
Right.
To make sure.
We could do it.
All the procedures were right. So, right now, the last time I talked to Denise, she was looking at twenty-six more applicants.
And how many are currently in the program?
I think it is eight or ten.
Okay.
And then Randall County is getting involved in this also through our, through the outreach that the grant requires us to do. And so Randall County's gonna get involved, not only in veterans, but then also the civilian part of the, two years.
Is there another county like our size that's doing something like this, Randall, as a comparison point?
I don't, I don't know. I know they've got some, they've got like seven grants out, I think, so.
Maybe if you could send that as a follow-up, that would be great to just know. Cause sometimes it's worth a follow-up call to see how it's going and what they're doing and those kind of changes.
I think anything you can do, and I applaud the program.
Yeah.
Especially working with the, the veterans with mental health issues, so there are a number of, of clients that certainly would be eligible for that. So I think that's supposed to be made, and, uh, to your point, if you wanna see some, uh, some statistics.
We're at the point now that we're wanting to take more numbers in, that, for, among the Golden States.
Okay, yeah, you could send that as a, as a, okay.
I move to approve the, uh, the approval of the Department of Commissioners Court, but I think that's, uh, by the, by the, by the authorization submission of the application. If you want to pass to the Texas Veterans Commission.
The blah, blah, blah part?
You can see, uh, the two thousand, twenty-two thousand, twenty-one veterans with mental health grant, and designating the forty-seventh district attorney to act as the county's authorized official in all matters pertaining to the county participation in this grant.
Minus the blah, blah, blah.
We need to include the amount of, uh, thirty thousand.
Thirty?
So noted.
Man a few words in. Okay, I have a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I got these two. Can you wait for that one, or?
That's fine.
Okay. Cause that's the only one I have. Okay, and you have a good ticket.
You are probably assigned the blank one.
Yeah, I do. Gotcha, gotcha covered. Thank you, Randall.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And, uh, Randall, before you pass, before you go, can you send out, uh, uh, an email or a briefie and give them the, the dates of that, that conference in February, March?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get a hard, I, I don't know that they've got a hard date actually set just yet, but there's a conference up there.
So, in what city is it in?
The folks that are working here on this, on this topic, and screening cases, and meeting them Friday, um, they, they would like for some of us to get involved, to see it, and, and, particularly commissioners, judges, cause y'all are, y'all are the ones that are kind of in control of the, of the, of the, so. But I'm, I'll get, I'll, I'll get a close to the date right now, then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, let's go back to, in order, okay. Number four, IT update. Do you hear a report on the current status of IT projects?
Morning.
Morning, Judge.
It's pretty brief. Um, all of our existing IT projects are on target moving forward. Additionally, we've started upgrading operating systems from Windows seven to Windows ten. And the online security training, um, I've started to set up, and in-person is still ongoing. There's still a few departments left, and I haven't been swimming for.
Couple of questions. The spillman backup process?
We're waiting on spillman.
Okay. Um, any, anything in particular? I know that's something the sheriff's been waiting on for a while.
It balls in their court. Our developers got them the data they requested, and unless there's been an update, we're waiting on spillman, spillman.
Okay, and then, um, the Levert unit, I know sixty-eight degrees, it was getting back down, doing well. No longer an issue?
No issues with heat.
Perfect, that's an excellent word.
Yes.
Um, the encryption of devices?
Continuing.
Okay, do we have an end date? We were thinking of end of October, everything would be done, is?
No, we're not gonna make that.
Just looking at my old notes.
For sure, for sure. Uh, other projects have, have taken precedent over that. I can tell you that every new machine that comes in, whether it's a desktop or notebook, because it has Windows ten, will be encrypting by default.
And that would make sense for the new machines. What about the existing?
That's continued, always removed.
And do we have a new end date of when we would get all of, everybody encrypted and all that?
Everybody for mobile use? Well, so if it's Windows seven, we can encrypt. It has to be Windows ten.
Okay.
Windows seven doesn't encrypt, uh, doesn't include the ability to encrypt. Windows ten does, so, um, I would say by the end of this month. For Windows ten, existing.
Looking at any further expenses?
I hope not. Not, not for that, no, sir. Not, not any, it's not in budget. No, sir.
Are you encrypting every machine, or just the ones that leave the?
Every new machine that comes in has Windows ten, and we're encrypting by default. Uh, as an example, like the tax office, the machines that we could, even though they're not notebooks, uh, I've had those, uh, if we could, encrypt them to prevent a smashing grab. So there is an alarm, there's, there's a video system there, but what we want to avoid is someone smashing a window, grabbing a system, and running off. If it's encrypted, there's no worries. So it doesn't cost the county anything to encrypt those, those machines.
What about the backup server to the LEC? I know there was a hardware issue, it's syncing.
And there's another hardware issue, and we're working with the vendor. However, that's, um, it's been updated, uh, it's configured, so it's not down. The data's still being moved over. Um, but there's a lot of data that's just getting done to get transferred over.
Do we have a new ETA on that?
Kind of depends on the vendor and the actual network. Uh, I would say hopefully by the end of the month.
Okay, and you, um, you guys are using an off-site backup, so we have a clean backup while that is working itself out, is that right?
And we have an additional, uh, the primary backup is, is in-house, it was already there.
Okay.
And so the off-site backup that we're paying for, we've done it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Number five, seven's maintenance con, grant contract to consider enacted upon the approval of the statewide automated victim notification service grant contract with the Office of General and General of Texas into our twice-governed assignment service agreement, renewals, notice, and maintenance contract. Carrie, I have received seven emails from these people, want me to docu-sign, so can I do that today after we, probably?
As long as y'all approve this.
As long as we approve it. Uh, this is the usual thing we had over years and years and years, and it's gonna just update.
Carrie, is this grant amount about the same, or is it going down?
It's about the same, and actually, it's just a pass-through grant. This is the amount that's paid to the vendor who actually does the work on it, so.
I make a, oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion that we approve the statewide automated victim notification service grant as presented to the court.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand. Five, zero, thank you. Number six, county holiday to consider enacted upon changing the days off for twenty nineteen Christmas leave for county employees from December twenty-five and twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen to December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. This is for this year only. Julie, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I just was wanting to see if we could just have Christmas Eve off and Christmas Day instead of Christmas Day and the day after. And I think, I mean, that's just a, that's an important time for a lot of people.
It is, people travel.
And they're spending time with families, and, so if we could do that for this year, um, the way the policy is written, I gave y'all a copy of that, and I just highlighted it on the back. It says that when Christmas Day falls on a Wednesday, then we get December twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, so that would be the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. It's written, for lack of better words. So we were just really wanting to see if we could just get Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. We're not asking for an extra day, we're asking for those two days.
Just wanna see how it works.
What difference does it make? I mean, other than Christmas Eve versus today?
Well, I think, I think the difference it makes around here is that if, if we don't have Christmas Eve, I mean, I think just for, you know, I mean, I'm gonna speak for me and my family. A lot of times you do stuff on Christmas Eve, so if you could be closed on that day, instead of the... on that day, instead of the day after Christmas, then it's, it's just a, it's just a matter of switching.
Well, I know there's usually nobody here at Christmas Eve, whether it's off or not.
But we are, we are. And I know there's, I know there's a few other offices that are as well, but historically, just for me here, a lot of offices do close early, and so that's, I was just trying to get it to where everybody could be on on Christmas Eve.
A lot of times, in past corporate, uh, job professions, at Christmas Eve, the day before, the departmental staff gets half of their employees off, starting at noon, and then they go home early, on the day before, just like Christmas Eve. And, and on New Year's Eve, they do the same thing.
I'm just trying to be a good girl and follow the policy, that's all we're trying to do.
But we have not tried to start.
We have a staff of two.
No, because next year, next year we actually.
Next year it's the same deal.
No, next year it worked, it works out. Yeah.
What about a department that has, takes Fridays off anyway?
I, I have no control.
There's not any.
I don't know that there is any. I'm gonna have control over my office, but I'm not even just asking for that, that's it. You got one, do you not? I mean, it's just, it's just.
Twenty nineteen?
It's just for one year only.
Just wondering if you're asked, would wait the, the holiday falls and then you.
Anybody have any discussion as far as, oh, I don't think so.
If they've taken off on it, if they, if those offices are closed on a Friday, that's up to them. I mean, elected officials are supposed to be able to run their offices, how they're, how they want to run it, and department heads fall under you guys. So that's, that's all I was asking.
There's some comments that you have?
I was just saying, from the district personnel standpoint, there is almost nothing happening for Christmas Eve.
No.
And from a personal standpoint, my children, my grandchildren, I did go on Christmas Eve, goes to dental on Christmas Day. I mean, I would even just take vacation day, but when I saw that on the agenda, I'm like.
So you're endorsing that?
Yes.
And it's for this year only, next year the policy would follow.
Well, my office, mental health does take vacation, so we have to be there, someone has to be there, you know? But I'm all for Christmas Eve. That's what we do, that's what my family does all the cooking for Christmas, and so it's not in my law drawer. It's the last day to shop. And she said it's the last day to shop, and you get off at five, or at six, it's hard to do.
They close at six, you get a lot of.
Said the man.
I move to, excuse me, approve of the proposal as stated.
For 2019 only, Commissioner?
For 2019.
Need a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
Have a motion in a second, on favor raise your hand. Five, zero. All right, yay, good. Number seven, longevity pay, to consider and act upon longevity pay is allowed by government code section six, five, nine, one, zero, four, four, five, D, to be effective ten, one, nineteen, to adjust the budget as necessary. Judge Sermon, Judge Sermon wants to explain that to you. I can see that she's eager.
Because I'm here?
She should've been here earlier.
I was outside waiting for it to pour out. I didn't want to get in the middle of that. Um, no, the reason I have this on here, I changed jobs this last year, went into the state system on January first, and when our new pay started in September, I'd been told I would get the longevity pay for a judge that served more than twelve years, and in September I did not get the pay raise, and so I contacted the state, they asked why, and they said, oh, you're entitled, we don't pay it, because my twelve years of prior experience is county court at law. The government code provides that if you're a state district judge, and you've earned those twelve years in the county court at law system, you're entitled to get it, but it's only if your county is willing to pay it.
So in previous years, the state ensured that the district judge, or county judge, got that longevity pay, correct?
The state provides longevity pay to state district judges. So section A, the state pays it if you've been there over twelve years. Section B, if you earned your twelve years in the county court at law system, which I did, I'm entitled to it, but the county has to pay it. So.
For section? Has to, or may?
No, it's, I sent you a copy this afternoon. It's a may.
May, not shall.
It's a shall in chapter, in A.
That is our saving grace.
There's your saving grace, thank you for your vote, Nancy.
Your vote.
But, so, that's what I'm here for.
My vote.
The, the other judges that are sitting across the street, except for three, there's four over there besides me, three of them get the longevity pay, and I do not, I'm the longest-serving judge in the county now, and, but will not receive the longevity pay because my twelve years, or twenty years actually, was earned in the county court at law. So I'm bringing it to your attention. I know it's not budget time, didn't know this was going to be an issue for me, because I was told I would be eligible, and therefore thought I was receiving it. So, let me just, let me just say this, and just point something out real fast. There are probably about fifty employees, Sandra, she's been here since she was four. She does not get longevity pay, they have asked for it, we have discussed it, it is not feasible, it is so expensive to do it. So, that, I'm just saying, there's a lot of people, sheriff, sheriff's office has a bunch, don't y'all?
We'd like to have it too.
Yeah, I know you would, we discussed that probability, it's just not feasible, it's just not, it is so expensive.
County used to do that.
I know.
I actually got like five hundred dollars, I don't know what it is when it started, then it stopped, I still got the money, but they stopped the competition, but we'd like to have this employee.
I just wanted to know that.
So it's not delineated for judges only?
Well, the statute that I brought to you is.
It is for judges only. Well, what I'm, what I'm trying to say so eloquently, is that if we do it for Judge Sermon, there's going to be an uproar from several people saying they want it to, and I don't blame them.
Well, and not only that it's not a matter of one action at court today, it really is a deep-dive study, that we need to go back, work with HR, look at how many employees would be eligible for this as a first pass, look at the financial impact of a longevity paid policy, because we don't have that today, right? And then see where are those dollars going to come from in the budget? That's kind of number one, because they don't exist in the budget. So I certainly recognize you, Judge Sermon's speaking from her lane, but I think Judge Tanner is saying there are others, right? So if we open this door, we need to recognize those dollars are not in the budget.
So Judge, so, so Judge is speaking more from, we open the door as far as setting, setting the precedent?
Exactly, exactly. And, and Judge, you said that it, this would cost about fifty-two hundred dollars a year? Five thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh-huh. A year, for, for this employee only, so. There's always ways for this county to look at its budget, you know, for years, we, the county pays the state supplement, and for some reason, the county paid more than they were required to the state supplement, and it was because, story was, Don Emerson wanted as much county money as he could, because it gave him retirement, the county retirement system versus the state retirement system. This year you took that, and you stepped back, it was brought to your attention, and so you're only required to put, it's thirteen thousand in, but you can put an eighteen thousand in or something. You saved a little over, close to five thousand dollars per judge on that, three, four to three thou, four to five thousand dollars, and that's good, you should've done it a long time ago, because the state made up the difference, it's not like you got a pay cut. The state was allowing you to put, you know, wanted you to put the money in, but if you didn't put it in, they would. So, I mean, you've cleared that.
Just like in so many different instances, those unfunded mandates continually.
Well, it's watching the law and finding out you weren't, you didn't have to pay it in the first place, but there was a judge that asked you to, and you did, so that it helped him in the county judge's retirement versus the state judge's retirement, because the state judge's retirement's not near as good as county judge's retirement, so, or county employee. I'm putting it out there, I didn't think y'all were going to go, yay, pick me! No. But I'm telling you, it's out there, I'd like to have it, if it doesn't work for this year, I'd like to consider it for next year, and that's the best I can do on it. Anything else? Can we skip to the desk issue? It's down on number twelve. I'm down for the.
Well, we, we need to vote on number seven.
I'd just like to say. I think all my concerns have already been expressed, one, it's an unfunded mandate, two, it's not budget time, and the precedence assesses what it costs this, but I'd also like to just mention that next year's budget is going to be a whole heck because of this three and a half percent gap.
Yeah.
And we have to start by budgeting what we have to do. We have to take a hard look at.
So let me just remind everybody here, please, please do not over-stimulate budget, please. There's not going to be money in the end, you go, oh, I really didn't need that, you're not going to have it. Okay? It's not, okay?
Anyone want to pass this?
Yeah, I guess we're going to pass it. Okay, I guess so. So, just move down to number eleven.
Eleven.
Equipment purchase, District Court, three-twentieth, consider and act upon the purchase of H O N desk, um, to be purchased from office wise, total cost one thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars, seventy-seven cents, funds to come from equipment repair maintenance. The request is that my court reporter have the desks to work on. When we moved from the fourth floor to the third floor in December and January, many of the desks were broken and unusable, and Chris can speak to that, he held off a lot of stuff that probably didn't even sell in the auction, because it was pretty used up. Didn't worry about it, the court reporter that I had that started January first, brought her own desk with her, desk with credenza. Well, then she decided this wasn't her kind of work, and so she left the first of April, and I have a new court reporter that started April eighth, that is Holly Craven, who is excellent. Didn't cross my mind, I didn't have a desk for her, we put a table in there that she's been using. She's an excellent overworker, has done a good job for Potter County, when I talked to her at her six months, you know, what's going on, what can we do for you, and she said, I'd really like a desk with drawers, instead of just a table to work on. So we visited with Chris, we found out what the dimensions are for the new court's building that's going to appear in a couple of years, and so we picked out a desk that would work.
So Carrie, where would this, the funds come from?
Equipment repair. Yeah, equipment repair and replacement account.
So how much do we have?
I don't know, I think it was about fifty thousand budgeted there.
And I'm telling you right now, it'll, it'll be very, at the end of the year, it'll be gone almost, because we should have used it this way. That's okay, why was the desk broken? Why was, you said when y'all moved, it was broken?
The three-twentieth equipment, their desks were broken, the boards were broken, the legs were broken.
But not in the legs, they were already broken.
It was a bunch of interesting, Chris backed me up, it was the most interesting group of stock. And so, of course, you get what you get when you get something that's been there thirty-something years and it was used up.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the desk for the district, three-hundred-and-twenty-second District Court funds to come from equipment repair and replace account. I'm sorry, three-hundred-and-twenty.
Okay, motion in a second, on favor raise your hand.
One out of two's not bad.
I know.
Thank you.
Fifty percent, Judge, fifty percent. All right, number twelve, equipment purchase, records management, we're going to pass that, Sandra.
So we have the money available, okay? We're going to continue now, okay?
Judge, is that budgeted? Can you, we understand where passing.
Carrie, can you?
It is budgeted, but it's out of the court records management fund, and there is not enough cash in the bank account to do it. There should be plenty by the end of December.
So why was it budgeted?
Because we knew there would be.
Anticipate.
So it's just a timing, timing.
Kind of like we wish the year.
Okay. Okay. Number thirteen, equipment purchase, fire rescue, to consider and act upon purchase of the following item, funds to be determined.
That's never.
Why are we going to determine these? But let me read them, let me read them first, twenty-eight Panasonic tough bulbs, twenty-four net cloud, mobile routers, and installation libraries.
I was fixing the megaphone, but I'll quit.
Okay.
No, we are, we ran into an issue with our tablets, with the computer issue with the county, they all have to be changed over Windows Ten. In doing that, and the security features of them and everything else, we decided we were just going to replace them, because it's actually in the long run going to be cheaper for us than paying for upgrades that we're going to have to continue doing. And in doing that, we also received a maintenance contract deal from Rocket, which handles our Wi-Fi connection in the trucks, that the service contract was going to be almost as much as we're spending to replace the equipment. So we've opted to replace all the equipment, we're going to replace the tablets that go in the fire apparatus with a, a different tablet that has a higher security feature, and we've worked with our IT department to make sure we're getting the right stuff, where everybody's going to have the proper card to be able to sign in the computer, so we won't have people trying to log into the computer while they're driving to a call. So we've changed a little bit of the system, and the funds are coming from the CAD, and it has been planned in there and was put in the budget as planned.
Was that just a typo?
It wasn't a typo at the time, Carrie was out of town, so we didn't get to talk to her, and I make sure we have her blessing before we flip anywhere, so.
What are you going to do with the old equipment?
It'll go to IT for auction, I believe.
Carrie, can I get your comments on this?
We had actually only budgeted eighty-five thousand for this, so we're about.
A hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
A hundred and four over. The cash is in the account, but it is over budget.
So we're about a hundred thousand over what is budgeted, and we just told Sandra she needs to wait on hers.
But it's a different.
I know, but I'm just saying, when we keep dipping into the CAD, and we talk about fire trucks that are three hundred thousand plus, and the need of.
I guess I would push back and say, are we, do we do it now, or wait and do it later? If it's something that we're going to have to do anyway?
We can take it out of equipment repair and replacement, so.
No, I don't want you to do that.
Commissioner Church, you oversee that department, is that right? No, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
It is, it is over budget, and as we said, we're replacing all of the equipment. I feel that it is better for us to do this than to keep going with these maintenance contracts and things that are not, they're not working properly, so we're replacing them one at a time anyway. I don't want to replace it one at a time and bring it out of this budget and that budget, and do it, everything I'm trying to do is up and up. We had planned to upgrade our tablets. That is not going to function with IT stuff and the security features that are needed. I'm not an IT person, so I'm not even going to attempt to do their job.
We have an IT person.
What we did is we had the company bring us several different options as to how we can remedy this problem for the least amount of expense for us, because I don't want to spend any more money on it than I have to. But at the same time, we have finally upgraded our systems to be able to not only communicate with other agencies, but within our own county. So we're trying to keep this going. If we don't do anything, we'll, we basically lose the capability to do everything except have a molotov spot.
How old are these, how old are these tablets?
I believe. Six years. Yeah, they're six years, and they have, I don't even know, I'm not like said, I don't know what their limit is, but I know they had planned on replacing them in five years.
Chief, have you worked with our IT company on this particular purchase? Have they looked at it, have they given them?
I haven't worked with them personally, but Pat is the one that does most of our IT work, and they have been working on this together, and I know Brandon has tried to prototype the computers that we brought in, and we have talked with them on several different occasions about how we're going to make this system mingle with the security features that it needs, and our ability to keep our stuff, we're going to talk to each other.
We specifically brought in the rep to sit down with Brandon and with Paul McReilson in that meeting with us now. We all sat down in IT, looked at the computers and talked about what they were, and decided what we're going to do.
Brandon, can you agree, and this is the path forward? I mean, I guess in my mind, a hundred thousand dollars is a, is a fairly big miss in budget, regardless of what account it comes from, right?
Well, we can, we can call it a miss, but at the same time, when I did it, the, the Well, we can call it a miss, but at the same time, when I did it, the plan was the upgrade. It wasn't to have a computer system crash on us and then come back and try to rebuild it.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect you to know a Windows 10 upgrade, but I would expect IT to know that, right? So I'm just trying to understand...
Well, originally, it was, when the grant came in originally, it was put into the fact that the computer part will go under the IT department. So we're not asking them to replace this, we're not asking them to do this, we're just asking them for their technical assistance, and we're going to replace it out of the CAD.
So, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You mentioned that you'd be able to communicate to each other. With your current system, is there a problem?
Yes, we are not giving truck locations on anything, and it's not helping us work with the city or our own partners.
The importance of being able to do that is pretty critical, especially on range fires and things like that, when you can't see each other. I don't, you know, I agree with Commissioner Mergeon, the $100,000 is a big deal, but the need maybe outweighs that.
Well, if I can interject there, I'll take the heat for the miscalculation, because that's my job, is to sit there and go, "What do we expect to spend?" I expected to upgrade some small tablets. I didn't expect to buy new tablets, I didn't expect to buy new mounting equipment. If you think about mounting equipment that goes into a fire apparatus, it's very expensive, because it has to be crash tested and everything else. So we're looking at a tremendous expense in everything to replace everything, and that's on me. I did not look at putting new mounting equipment, I didn't look at cabling for new antennas, I just, I looked at it as an upgrade. And as you know, we are working diligently, trying to bring our fleet up to up to status quo, something that we can maintain with. And in doing that, you know, we've had some bumps in the road, just like everybody else, and I'm here to say that without this fund, none of this would be happening, and we wouldn't even be having this.
So I guess the bottom line question, unless you want to bring IT up to speak to this, we're in the process, again, of updating and putting our system, what is in the 21st century?
Well, it's going to have, it's also going to be into, the security is a major deal that we're talking about, and we're not talking about a fire truck driving down the road with somebody trying to type the password into, we're talking about a card scanner that's going to be able to sign, because everybody now will have to have their own password, where we've had generic passwords.
So we're going to need to do this simultaneously, correct?
It's, well, it's, as far as I know, the upgrade Windows 10 is coming up on us pretty quick, and if we don't have it, they won't work, so...
I just would request that you work with our IT company very closely on this. I mean, this is a $190,000 purchase, and I recognize you guys are doing yeoman's work. I don't expect you to be the IT expert, I could miss that.
They've been with us every step of the way, and that's, I don't expect them to come up here and ask to spend money on our behalf, but I do expect that they will be with us every step of the way and make sure this is done.
I think if I can move on it, but I would echo Commissioner Mergeon's concern about assuming you know that the fire apparatus is utilizing the CAD every court session, so we just want to be mindful of that.
Yes, we are, and that is why it has funds to be determined, because we hadn't had a chance to confer with Carrie at the time, so we were waiting to make sure that we have our bases covered before we go out and spend anything.
So Chief Lake, you are the chief, correct?
Yes.
And you're buying some tablets, is there any way you would consider some big chief tablets?
I have one. I have never had to restart it, because my pencil hasn't been, you turn your pencil, and the lid comes out.
Focus on $100,000 that you're spending.
I know, I get the letter from the government about the CAD, I know how much money is... I'm good, I'm good.
I've never had to reboot my big chief's bill.
I move to approve the purchase of the following items, and funds to be from the CAD. 28 Panasonic tough books, including accessories, purchased from C.W., CDW-G under national IPA contract, totaling amount of $153,115.47. 24 NetCloud MA5-09000 mobile routers with antennas, purchased from GTS Technology under the DIR contract, total amount of $31,069.8. Install of above equipment to the 24 fire rescue vehicles, purchased from Panhalla warning equipment, totaling amount of $400, that's a total of, was anybody calculating?
$188,985.27.
That's what I was going to say. Okay, I need a second. You have a motion and a second on favor, Agent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for having the confidence in us to do this correctly. That's why we're here, and yes, it is a little question, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, number 14, copier lease program, to consider an act upon approving the copier lease contract with Tascosa Office Machines, under interlocal agreement with the City of Memro. Chris?
The copier lease program was up, it's actually a five-year contract with Tascosa with five one-year extensions beyond that, so it's a total of 10 years. So we looked at a lot of the copiers throughout the county and noticed that some haven't been touched in 10 years. So with the new contract, a lot of departments will be able to upgrade new copiers at a lower price, depending on how they go, because of a lot of refurb's. If the countywide took all their copiers out and put all refurb's in, we'd say 44%, but that's something that we're not going to do. So my department is going department to department and asking what the copier leads are, laying it all out and saying it's going to be less than $1,000, so, it's a win-win.
I think ours, for the ones, has been 10 years at least.
Yeah, yeah, so we went down dramatically on the curve price per sheet that we're paying. So that's where our big savings are.
I make a motion that we approve the contract with Tascosa Office Machines under the interlocal with City of Memro.
Decided.
You have a motion and a second on favor, Agent. Number 15, formal bid, 1191-19, purchasing to consider an act upon the order, formal bid, 1191-19, relocation of city sanitary and water utilities, West Texas Utility Contractors, as low as the best bid, total amount $270,040.
We actually had five vendors submit bids for this project. This is kind of the breaking ground of the new district courts, because we do have to get that plot ready for building on, and it's the moving of the sanitary and the water for the city. So, lowest and best was West Texas Utility Contractors, they're coming in at 110 days. They are coming in under what we projected that portion of the project was going to cost.
They are local?
Yes, they, all five are local.
Where are these funds allocated to come from, since it's prep work for the district court's budget?
It would be coming from that.
Yeah. What is the fund? Is it just the district court's fund?
340, yes. I'm sorry, sir.
I just don't know if we need to include that in the motion, just to round the rules a bit. I need a motion.
I move we have worked the formal bid number 1191-19, for relocation of city sanitary and water utilities to West Texas Utility Contractors, total amount of $270,040.
Do you want to reference the fund, Commissioner, or no, you think it's implied? I'm fine.
Coming from the district court's building.
Second.
You have a motion and a second on favor, Agent. Potter County, Paul, that campus is not here today, he's still home with his wife, she's doing okay, now he's sick. So he'll be here tomorrow. The general report today is 533 people, 85 of those are female, none of them are farmed out. We have a 40, 86% felony rate, and then 8% misdemeanor rate. Eight. Eight. Do we have any insurance items?
Uh, one, a maintenance truck got rear-ended out in front of the Santa Fe Building when it was snowing out. While they were writing that report, it got hit again, so... Both are not our faults, but I wanted to bring it to the attention of the board.
Oh, no, I just got a vision of the Keystone cops, I don't know.
How much damage?
Broken taillight and scratches on the side of the vehicle.
Is anyone injured?
No, all good. No, they pulled off.
Okay, executive session is moving on, agenda items for next time?
Judge, I don't know if we need a formal agenda item, but I did want to bring to the court's attention adding our IT company to the district courts committee. I did ask Julie to pull that original committee. I'd like to get them added to your working committee as you're, you know, working on the district courts project. I think they're ad hoc, as you guys need them.
They're already...
So I think, David, keep me honest here, I don't think you're in the standing meetings, maybe it's just a housekeeping thing, if you'll include them on the calendar invites. I just, what I'm anticipating is I don't want any of IT infrastructure things to creep up on us, I think we've learned a lot of lessons.
They were...
They have a meeting this, IT has a meeting this week with, with H.O.K., but they're also, I brought in the IT department that oversees the district courts to be in the needs of the district courts IT.
I think, okay, so I will lean on you guys, my only word of caution is, a lot of times what happens in projects this scale is, you know, you'll pull them in when you need them, and then there's the big governance committee. Sometimes there are decisions on the infrastructure that do affect IT, or there may have been a decision that's made. So if there's an opportunity to bring them into the core committee, I think we've learned some lessons and not kind of one-off meetings. If you think there's enough infrastructure there, that's fine, I think the courthouse has been a good example of that, so I'm just calling that out.
They probably need to de-power power, really, the department.
Yeah, they've been in it all along, in the beginning.
Okay.
So we need to put the cameras back on the agenda for next time?
Probably not.
Let's wait and see what, we're going to be talking with them, let's wait and see what the results of that are.
You can always let me know, okay. All right, thank you, that is all, we are adjourned, thank you so much.